Has some type of restrictions, not called light duty, but no jumping, that type of stuff is what he was saying. I haven't seen the.
Well, out of the truck.
Have seen the document.
I see that new truck trying it out.
Call me in order, phone call.
George.
Yes.
Motor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Anybody want to speak in public forum, Randy?
Well, this winter, Steve retires on December tenth, we're gonna have some projects around the farm. And I need to get some stuff moved out of the, one of the buildings that we're working on. All of us have room east of Carolyn, south on Wendell's Weapons, there are, there is storage containers for rent or sale. With my stuff, work benches, tools, whatnot, in those, in the grain bins, I'm gonna need a, I'd like to get a shipping container. And I was wondering if I could put it northwest of the shed that Denny Garland built Riz Semi years ago. And I took a picture of the area. The shipping containers, they have value, eight foot wide up to forty foot long. And I think at forty footer, I'm gonna, I'll need that much, I might need two, I don't know for sure. But Scott said that that would be something for the city council to discuss and approve.
So how long is it gonna be there?
Well, through the winter.
Is this ground you own?
No, this is, this is. Denny Garland's truck shop, that's northwest of, of the truck shop. Along that, that long, one row of trees.
So, Jack, just know that, you know, Denny Garland has built that truck shop back there, it's changed hands a few times since then, I'm not even sure who the owner is. But, back in the day, the city sold a portion of the land to Denny Garland. And then Denny built his, his shed on that, okay? Only that portion that has the, the shed on it is privately owned. The remainder, everything to the north is, is city property. So just, you know, as you think about this, and whether you allow something like that, you know, it's, you know, A, would you do it, B, would there be rent? But the other thing that's, is allowed down there that's at least similar is that that's our designated truck parking spot. You know, so we allow semi trucks to be, we encourage semi trucks to be parked down there.
So is it straight north of the city shed?
Be west.
Yeah, it's west.
Along that row, that long row of trees.
It's behind, yeah, behind Monta Hockups and, and Landy.
So the property isn't really Denny Garland's, it's the city's property.
Now, not where Denny built the shed, he owns that property.
Right.
But everything else is.
So this is going on the city property?
Right. That's why I needed, I needed approval to set a storage container in that area where my truck sits, northwest of that building. That's the area I pitched out. And, would the city wanna sell a parcel of that? In time, it was something to think about. And, but I would like to have at least one container, just to sit there for the winters for my, for my stuff and, and. It's gonna probably get filled up.
How big is the container again?
I can get up to forty foot, twenty foot down and up to forty foot.
So Randy, if we wanted a deadline for it to be removed, when, when would you think?
Ah, late spring, early summer.
May first, May thirtieth?
Yeah, thirty, May thirtieth.
Whatever we can do, we can't do it tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
But I mean, they'll have to think about it till the next conference.
Right.
Put this on the agenda for, for next time?
Yep.
Sure. They'll give them time to think about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Randy.
Thank you.
So you understand it'll be on the agenda next time to me?
Just a real quick question for you though, Randy, I mean, are you willing to pay rent if we, if we would?
Yes, I will.
Okay, can send agenda, motion to approve?
So both.
Second?
Second.
Phone call.
Motor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Can we have a building for pit stop, storage buildings?
Yeah, so that would be a, a storage building, think of it as camper boat storage type of stuff.
So, does the, the drainage thing we're talking about running down there from Crest Park Drive, is that gonna impact? Because we don't exactly know where the storm sewer is.
You know, it, everything will impact when you start building stuff down there, more concrete and everything, just the more impervious circum, surfaces, the more runoff.
Aren't we concerned that they've covered it up with dirt?
No, it's, it's exposed. That, the intake, the one intake there close to the ditch.
And that would be the one that we would hook in from Crest Park?
It just flows over the ground to get there. We'll go through some of the stuff here about drainage.
So what side of the building is the?
West, thirty foot west of where the cement is now.
So it, yeah, and he just said this is still on the, the original, good dirt from the, from the car wash properties. This is not on the field dirt property yet.
But Eric signed on?
Yeah, on all, on all three of them, they're, they're signed and ready to go.
Can we, any motion to approve the pit stop? Can, also wants to do that, motion to approve all three?
Come on.
Second? I'll second, phone call.
Motor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
But, the one Travis, I don't know where he, but it's four feet off the property line?
On, on the backside?
It's got a lot lying north to the.
So it's, it is, changed a little, but changed a couple of feet further to the south, so it said four, that changed six. But with that, he owns property, next property to the north too. And we, we allow folks to be closer than property line, to use property.
Yes, my motor, yes.
Four and a half.
And that's just gonna be.
How tall is it? Sixteen.
It'll be that tall.
Yeah, it's, it's got nine foot side walls and.
I thought that's.
Four twelve pitch, it's, it's gonna be.
I thought that was the person that's about.
It, it's compliant, that's compliant as well.
It's a. It's a shed.
Yeah, sorry.
Garage.
If you had a question.
Scott, I, I, I.
Garage, it is a garage.
And he doesn't, is this where he lives?
This is normal household property, they're directly adjacent.
Got it, I was thinking of inside the property. Alright.
Phone call.
Motor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Reese.
Okay, we have a zoning request for Lakeview Motors on the highway.
Okay, so, this is a zoning request from Mike Stewart. And that he would be doing businesses like Lakeview Motors, we would like to locate his business out there. Mike, are you online? But he would, he would, he would like to locate the Lakeview, Lakeview Motors business out. When you, when you do that, and you set things up with the DOT about having your license, one of the things that you need to provide to them is, is the document that says property is properly built. So, in this case, the property is outside the city limits, okay? So Mike's house is directly to the south of the factory, one of those homes there. And then, but it's outside the city limits, so it has, it's governed by county zoning. In this case, governed by county zoning, but is in an urban transition area. And, actions that occur within the urban transition area, there's first a consultation with the city to see whether, whether the city would have any input in this. Now, it, it's an allowable use in the area, it actually would need permission from the board of supervisors from the county to do this. But, again, it's within the urban transition area and we don't look for any, any input from the city.
My concern is there's a residence right beside it. You know, because it's not like.
We're gonna park a bunch of cars on the highway?
That's, that would be one, one thing, you know, you certainly could, could take a look at. If you'd like to have some, again, you're just making a suggestion, if you'd say no cars in front yard, just a suggestion. Because he, he has a maintenance shop north of his house right now, it's been functioning for several years.
So is it up to county to determine this out before they ask?
Yeah, we, we are offered the opportunity for consultation. It's a weird deal, because this, I think, is dealing with new, basically new zone, I don't know if there's any construction proposed with it. I'm just.
I know, but he would be part of ours out there. I just, I have a concern with the neighbors, because there's Sarah Neville, not too far this way, right?
In the east, they live to the east.
And then you got, you, is Paul Puckey on the other one?
Yes.
I just think that, that's a big impact for those.
So what, because then, then we open that highway up to Phil, like that, people could build along the highway if that would be?
Yes, outside the city limits, this area is not governed by that.
I would not put that in the city.
And that so is, and, and their new property is, these houses there, so it's Lanes and Thompsons and, and then next year's and, and Puckey's, these, these apartments. They're outside the city limits.
So has anyone talked to the neighbors if they're talking about?
No.
That's just a dumb, I mean, have these be going to this stuff?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
I just like to know what the neighbors' views are. Well, they should have, they should be notified that a business is proposed.
I say, really, it's counting as a, we're just.
Right.
But if that's, if that's an input, though, I mean, the neighbors should know.
I'm just concerned about a lot of cars.
Really vintage automobiles, I mean, he's been planning on moving them all out in the elements all the time. He says he's gonna sell vintage automobiles.
Yeah, when I talked, when I talked with Mike, this, the business occurs out of this building on the north side of the house. But then again, you know, and, I guess we know we've seen cars parked out in front in ten.
But not a lot.
Yeah, I guess, but I've never.
Is it zone?
It's in the urban transition zone, yeah.
Is that a zone, or is it residential, or anything, it's all thrown in there?
It's.
I understand it's between the county and us, but.
Yeah, so it is in the urban transition zone, there are specific uses that are allowed with approval of the board of supervisors. And this is one of those types of uses that's allowed with the approval of the supervisor. Yeah, so what, here's what I have, that the neighbors should be notified and, and concerned about parking in front, in front lawn?
Yes.
Ah, yeah, it's like I say, it's just, just our input on this, I guess.
Okay, we have a grant application for Milton's on Main?
Yes, so, yeah. And, of course, I think everybody's seen their project. Just the, one new thing out of this was that they still propose two side, the north side of the building, over, over the block on the north side. And you can see what the total cost of the project was. It'll be about ninety thousand. Within our development agreement with them, they were entitled to a private listing.
Okay, I'll show that they approve it. No second?
Phone call.
Tom?
Yes.
Motor.
Yes.
Reese. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, twenty-one thirty-seven, agreement with the affordable housing challenge.
Yes, so, the development agreement begins on page twelve. There is just a couple of minor changes in that, in regards to allowing potentially steel framing of the houses, if the cost difference was such, they wanted to go that way. May, just clarifying that this would be a two-phase project, that, that they would look to do phase one next year and, and phase two in twenty-three. So, that, prior, it had said, you know, they wanted, wanted to do as much as they could during twenty-two. And maybe roll over to twenty-three, this is just clarified, but this for sure is a two-phase project. And, the, the third change deals with that one block extension of West Street to get to the project site. And, they have committed then, that they would pay for half of the, of the cost of that extension. So, they will look at. Page nineteen is the cost. So the, the breakout of the cost would be the, the three columns to the right. Where the city, the city is responsible for the installation of water, and with any recent housing development. So you see, cost on, on that would continue, season on nine, six thousand. And then, the street work, including all the excavation and everything, are with that. So that would include the cul-de-sac in Outlot Twenty, as well as half the cost of the street to get there. Putting some tendencies on. And you see the far right-hand column is the portion attributable to affordable housing. So that's half of the, of the block there to, to get, half of the block of West Street to get to the site. Then also, lots of the land clearing is, is all there, and then everything related to sanitary sewer is there. And everything then related to storm sewers is theirs. So let's take a look, yeah. Some of the issues about drainage.
So the pavement thing, is that from the entrance to the end of the cul-de-sac, is that, that figure there?
Yeah, that's, that's our, our share, from the, that's the, our share of the entire pavement, yes.
From where West Street stops right now, all the way to the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so, and just looking at the cost breakout, that in Outlot Twenty where the cul, the cul-de-sac road actually begins, that, as part of the proposal, that was the city committing to, to put that road in. And then it's, it's this extra block to get there, which would be fifty-fifty between the city and the developer.
How confident are you on these numbers?
These are from, they're from DGR Engineering, that's their concept numbers. Which is, this sketch that I have sitting here again. So those are, those are the ideas. Now, working with the developers, and thinking about those retention bonds, this, this concept plan shows two retention bonds. They do not want to do two retention bonds. So the northwest one, they, they do not really want, want to do that one at all, they do a bigger one there in the, in the northeast. Because they, they need this additional land and for additional housing units. So, they look at, at one retention bond there. Then, I'll show you. You can't hardly see it, but it's page twenty-five, if you, if you could see the, the number on that, on that aerial photo. What that shows you is the location of Outlot Twenty, and then how everything would drain. So, water would drain into this retain, retention basin, okay? And then conceivably, it could drain to the north, okay? Now that shows an eight-inch tile through there, that's Larry Hauser's eight-inch tile. And I'm working with Larry, he would have a preference that we would try to use that tile, instead of just allowing it to dump into the ditch. Because, look at the previous page. And, this, what this is intended to show you is everything on the highway. Basically, from, from the, from the bottom side of Zavida, everything between there and, and basically Cook Siting Building. Everything drains to the middle, to that, to that area right around the car wash. So, it, it, if it gets in that ditch, that's where, that's where it's gonna end up. Then you see the drainage system that's in there right now, to be able to evacuate that. So there's a twelve inch that does come across to the south side of the road, as, as a public tile, and then there's an eight inch on the north side, and that's Larry's.
So Outlet Twenty, right next to it, there is those storage sheds of, do they still belong to?
Yeah, Doug.
Doug.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's gonna drain kind of to the northeast?
Yeah, yeah, where there'd be a, a retention basin there, this is the proposal.
Right, but, but I don't, why does that impact the car wash, you lost me.
Well, I tell you what, if, if that water gets in the ditch, it ends up at the car wash.
At the car wash.
I mean, it just falls all the way down.
If we don't, if we don't hook it into the tile, is what you're saying. But we have to drill under the highway to get into that tile, right?
And, you know, just interacting with, with the engineer, we don't know the depth of that tile, don't really know that it's feasible.
I was gonna say that, because there is no tile under that highway in that location right now, is there? Isn't it, it's up by the, the one that's broken that they're gonna fix, it's up by the car wash, right?
Yep.
So would we run tile all the way over there and then run it through there? Rather than going under the highway here? Or is that what your contention is?
This, the intention right now is to raise this as an issue, because we'll, we'll have some more, more discussion on this.
Because it's gonna be a huge issue.
Talking with, with Larry about, about that, his preference is, is not to keep adding more water down there to the car wash.
See that?
Yeah.
I know, but the cost of running it under the highway at this location. Because does Larry's got, he's got this tile over here, and then he's got another one over here by the car wash?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So, I mean, what does that cost? Do we know what that costs?
No. No, as far as, as far as getting under the road, yeah. It's a, I don't know if it's ten thousand dollar deal, but it's, you know, it'd be about that much.
Okay, well, it'd be nice to have some kind of idea.
Yeah.
Another question I have about this, Dave, is number. Number V, use of the site, number two, is that, I thought there was a bigger paragraph earlier about our approval of what kind of housing is gonna go there. So that we were assured that it wasn't gonna be any kind of section eight.
The language that we used was that, where are you, paragraph three?
I was B, paragraph two, I don't know where. Page thirteen.
Okay.
Yeah, page thirteen.
Yeah, on page two, paragraph B, two. The city reserves the right to review and approve any proposed leases or sales of the units to assure that the future use of Outlot Twenty is in accord with the development agreement. City approval will not be unreasonable without.
Are we covered for sure with that? I mean, it just seems such a small statement.
Well, that's as broad as we can get without.
Crossing the line.
Some federal issues.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So what's, so unreasonable, what is?
Who determines that?
Who determines that?
Ultimately, well, if the two parties can't agree between them as to what is reasonable, then ultimately, it'd be an interpretation of the contract. Would be their proposed use, as, whether it be reasonable or not, and each side would ultimately present arguments to a court that it became necessary that way. But, we don't have the veto power on it, and I don't think the city wants that.
Why's that?
Because we do not want to have someone take this right that we have and claim that we're using it for.
Fires.
Discrimination.
Discriminate, discriminatory purposes. And, you know, we can, we can delve into whether or not something is discriminatory, but it's a lot easier to do it on a case-by-case basis versus a broad blanket rule that applies to everyone regardless of their situation. So this is, this, we've been, I've been thinking through this language, doing a little research, and I think this is, it's, at this stage, the best we should, we want to do.
Okay.
So the, the people that are developing this also have to run these documents past various federal agencies. And so, I don't think we want to delve into specifics until we know what we're being presented with. It at least gives us the opportunity to know what's being presented for a sale or a lease. And then to look into it on a case-by-case basis, not based upon race, creed, color, et cetera.
So who made up the, the, engineer makes up these kind of rules?
I wrote that.
I don't understand, okay.
And apparently, it passed approval on their side too, so. You can't, half the trick of writing a contract is to have both people actually sign it, so.
Any more questions on twenty-one thirty-seven?
Might just, my other, my other point to you again is, so it's page nineteen and twenty, nineteen being the cost, twenty being sources of funding to, to do that. And it's just a note that we do have, have some cash on hand that, that we could commit to that. I would propose that we use that water sink and cleanse to offset part of the, part of the water cost. Can you use some sales tax if you'd like, but, and there's a balance in the general fund that can assist with that also.
Do you want to clean up this wall? Paul and Phil's tree, you know?
Uh, no timing on anything for the wall.
Would we have a line to ask them for a game plan, what their plans are?
No, we could sure ask, yeah. Because they have, they have talked about Paul and Phil, that type of stuff. They just don't have any timeline on what.
Be nice to, you know, take the trees and stuff so you have decent ground to work on in this way.
Okay, we have a motion to approve twenty-one thirty-seven.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Phone call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mora?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, resolution twenty-one thirty-eight.
So this thing, yeah, would say that we would, with that development agreement, then we agreed to, to sell the property. What this does is agrees to sell the property, it sets a public hearing date for that sale. So we can't sell public property without having a public hearing on it. And it would set October, October eighteenth as the, as the date of public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Mora?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, twenty-one thirty-nine, city urban renewal area, number three.
Right, so with this, the action today would be to set a public hearing on the urban renewal amendment. But let's take a look at the urban renewal amendments on page six. And the several things that's, that's done through this amendment starts with number one, about clarification of the expiration date. It stays in effect now until it would be revoked by the council. The addition of property, and we've, we went through that before, and this is just included on the, the back and in, and in the maps about the property that's included. And with that, then, with addition of, of property, we do need to, there'll be an ordinance that goes into effect about having, adding this property to the, to the area, as well as, this is reviewed then by planning and zoning commission to make sure that the plan is consistent with their, with our comp plan. And then the, the update of the descriptions of, of what would be proposed. Again, so that, that first issue deals with the, with the community center. Currently, the urban renewal plan has an amount of three hundred thousand dollars in there, and this would change that amount to five hundred thousand dollars if that were to proceed.
Do we have any other, I, do we have other projects in there? In the urban renewal?
We, we do, and they're like downtown economic development projects.
They're listed, they're listed?
They are. They are, like. And we had our city maintenance shed in there and that type of stuff, and we opted not to use TIP funds for those. Number four identifies a specific project again, and this is a Jacobson project. So it's the, including the Jacobson project includes a, an incentive payment to them. And, and then B on that includes that, that water pump, water pressure project, and that's B on page twenty-nine.
On the left side, Tom?
Yep. And number, and letter C would be, be to be able to utilize funding for water main installation. We wanted to look at specifically replacing that water main up there, that two-inch water main in front of the old shadens and, and the hotel area. Now, we also have some options up there about looping water to, to address some, some loop water concerns. But I guess it'd be an eligible project, we just haven't gone down that road yet.
How far did we talk about replacing that line up there by shadens? That was in pretty bad shape, wasn't it, Jeff?
Yeah, just that, just the two-inch to the four-inch.
Yeah, Dean, I've, Dean has done a lot of certain research.
Which is basically the motel. The, just going to the motel is just the two-inch.
Okay.
And that is junk, but the four-inch going to the west throughout all them properties is in really good condition.
So we would use TIP funds probably to replace that two-inch to a four-inch?
Two-inch and, and like to loop at.
Look at some loop, and that would all be part of the pressure?
You're not really looking at a lot of footage either on going across the front of phase pro, either, really.
We can do that ourselves? Ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Sure.
Give me the spare time.
He said yes.
But we would, we would do it about the same time as we're thinking about doing this pressure pump, or would it?
Yeah, probably just up in the air, I mean, we're just at the beginning stages on those projects. You know, we haven't, we haven't done any official design on any of the work yet, just that preliminary study.
Yeah, okay.
How long will it take to get some light that up?
To, to have the design work done?
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys would say we're, we're ready to go and we're gonna proceed with this, we'll do the design work through the winter.
Don't you think we should have a full council here to put the vote on that?
It's just set a public hearing date right now.
That's another step.
It is, and it, it needs to, needs to proceed before the first event.
Well, I know we need to happen because.
It's just for a public hearing.
Yeah, but there's, I tell you what, there's a lot of people that don't want that event.
Well, that's why you have a public hearing.
Yep, they got a chance to lose their opinion.
Well, I hope they do.
It, I, yeah, I guess I'll lay out timeline on this, that, you know, we've worked through this plan amendment process and, and the ordinance to, and to have the new lands included and stuff. But December first is a, is a very important date about being able to certify this, this stuff. And, and we would have our internal debt done to ourselves before December first.
This, this is the way I understand it, just pretty much identifying the TIP area. It's not, it's not a done deal about the community center. It's just that if you're gonna have a TIP urban renewal zone, you have to have projects. And that's one of them that's been in there for years.
I thought we voted on this years ago and knocked that event center out of here, and now here we are again, talking about it. I remember when we voted on it and it got voted down. And now we're still talking about an event center that most people don't want. Biggest share of the people in Town and Lakeview do not want that.
We had two surveys out, and that's not the way they said.
Where was the survey? I never seen one.
We sent, they sent them out twice.
Well, I'd like to see them.
I don't know where they're at now, online somewhere, it's cool.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, online. How many people, ten percent of the people or twenty percent on computers?
Yeah, it was a couple hundred.
Yeah, exactly. Out of eleven, huh?
And you're right, Jerry, it was voted down the first time, but the second time, when it was presented to the council, that they moved forward with it. The council voted to let them move forward with it.
And I missed two meetings in the eight years I've been here, and I bet you that's right.
I know the second time it was presented, the council okayed for everyone to move forward with it, with the planning of it, or to, to move forward with trying.
I think people need to take a look at this because there's a lot of people out there, and I don't care if you talk to them kind of people or not. I talk to them kind of people that do not want that event center. They think it's gonna be broken five years or less. And you can't build it for that, to have them to concert down here because how many times has it got rained down? Once or twice? Again, how many years?
And, and again, that's why we have a public hearing as far as people being able to put their input in.
Well, whatever, I just.
This is a public hearing on defining the urban renewal zone, is what this is.
It's just part of the urban reserve zone I don't like.
Yeah, so it'll deal with the zone, it deals with the plan amendment also, all these items that are quoted in the plan amendment. But there is a process to work through as far as consultation with the, with school and county, and there's several things that need to occur before the public hearing. Public hearing in this case would be proposed for the first meeting in November.
Motion on twenty-one thirty-nine? I'll make it. Second?
I'll second.
We'll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
No.
Mora?
Yes.
Okay, Crescent Park Drive drainage. You got your plan?
So just. Really what I wanna show you is, is on page thirty-eight. If you can make, hide your hair of that, of that aerial photo, this is what the proposal would be to do some work yet this fall. And, and that would be to put in some drop curb and, and some six-inch standard curb on Crescent Park. So basically just thinking of it as drop curb from the north side of Kyle Linder's driveway down to the north property line of Icorns. They, they prefer a, a drop curb there with Icorns. And then full curb from, from then on around the corner to, to assist with the drainage. And then drop curb just over on Pat's side there then too. So that would be ninety, about ninety-five feet of, of drop curb over there. We had talked at one time about, about making any changes to drainage through storm sewers or anything. This is not proposed to do any additional storm sewer work. This would just, just do the curb and gutter work right now. It's, you know, if, if the council would approve proceeding, want to get this, get this bid out for, for work, have it back in a couple of weeks. Do you have work done within that?
So why are we not doing, I thought we were gonna do part of the campground thing. I mean, I know we're doing all this in stages, but I thought we were gonna do the campground across the road.
Yeah, and that's, it's still in the works, dude, there's nothing's really come of that yet.
Yeah, right now, just to get the water down to that intake at Horseshoe.
Right.
And then after that, go into another phase to try to get the water out of the campground. If you take a tile and go from this intake and go straight north to the.
You're gonna go to the museum.
There you go, that's the word I was looking for. Go to the museum with it, open end it there, and just go onto the ground, then it'll catch that intake that goes down to that.
To cases.
Area, yeah, yeah, it goes down there. And I checked that tile today that, and there's, this just opens in off that hill and then flows down the hill to that by the car wash there.
I thought, right, I thought. I thought we were gonna do the campground in phase one to at least get it across the street before we took phase two, which was taking it out. I didn't think we were gonna go, I know there was discussion, but I thought, we thought it was too much water to go through Keys, and we were gonna go farther.
Oh, there, there's a, I, I, when I talked to Mauer, he was, that is gonna be between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars to run it underground down past by Moore's old building, you know, and then it's go into the ditch there, crossover.
I understand, I understand that, but I'm back, just back at the campground.
Okay.
You're saying we should do that in the phase two?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be like in the spring? I mean, are we gonna have spring rains and we're gonna have this campground issue, and then we're gonna be tearing up?
Right now, we're still gonna have an issue with the campground until we can get to like a phase to go try to get out of the campground.
So to get out of the campground now, to get across over to the historical, the museum?
There's a tile.
We have to do all of it together? I mean, we have, you can't do that and get it to the museum without doing all the way to the road or not?
Okay, say that again.
So like right now, we're gonna go to the intake on Horseshoe Drive?
Correct.
When are we gonna do, if we do from the campground across the road to the museum, right? In order to do that, at that time, we have to go all the way to the road? We can't do that as phase two? Am I not making?
You're not gonna get a lot of water out of campground going there, just ain't gonna happen.
It won't be that much, and really, all we're gonna do, Vic, is, is see what we can do to have surface drainage to that culvert under Crescent Park Drive. Right there by the light bulbs. There's a, there's a tile underneath there. And really, that's it, you're gonna give water to that stage, and it flows, it flows through the ditch from then on out.
And then with, on the second stage from Horseshoe, if you take that tile and go north.
Right.
And then you're actually plugging the two tiles from the Horseshoe that are going across the road into the campground. You cap them, then you get no water from like the Horseshoe and on that north side of the road to go over to the campground. As of right now, everything from the Horseshoe coming down them hills shoots right across into the campground.
Exactly. And we can't stop that until we go all the way to the road?
We go all the way to the north to the museum.
And then just get across the grass and then get to that tile. By that time, it'll all drain, seeped into the dirt.
But you were just talking about shutting off the water that's going into the campground now.
Yeah, the two.
Can you, those two tiles, you can't stop them right now until you go from that intake to the north to the museum.
Because all that water from the Horseshoe right now has to go over to the campground.
And have you take a look at page twenty-four again, this, this aerial photo? And you see down, down there, low right-hand corner is Crescent Park and the, and Camp Crescent area, okay? Those tiles are drawn in there, and the black lines are, are, are the tiles. So the two, the two things that look like two circles and lines there, two lollipops on the right-hand side. Okay, those are intakes there that, that drain from Horseshoe Drive, but they drain across into the campground.
Right.
Okay?
So we're not gonna change that?
No, not right now.
And why not? Why can't we change it now? Why can't we run it to the museum?
We, we could if you wanted to make it one project and just dig that in.
Well, even after we get to the museum, then we have to go down to the highway.
No, we don't have to.
Now, just think about that if, if, when you get into the, into the ditch to the north of the museum parking lot.
That's going to the highway.
Yeah, yep, that's where it's going now. We're just gonna take the, uh, we'll put the water from going.
We won't have to do your, going down.
Go across the grass and get a tile.
Right now, it's going here?
There's a tile, no, that's a tile under there. This here intake's going to the campground, so we're gonna stop that and go this way.
But not, not yet?
No, we're gonna see, this works first, get rid of, you know, help Pat shug in that other lady. At least the time thing, you know, this was May, we could probably do it all. But this is late in the fall, and we'll be lucky to get this.
Yeah, it's because they don't want to spend fifty thousand at one time, right?
Yeah.
Just my hearing things.
Okay, you want this, this one to start with? We need a motion to proceed.
Yeah, can you just proceed the bid to curb and gutter project?
I'll do it.
Second? I'll second. We'll call.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mora?
Yes.
City administrator report.
Ah, so I had, I had a little bit of good news today. We filed our, our grant to the Economic Development Administration to assist with that evacu water line project. So that, that has been submitted, and we've seen something over a quarter hundred and eighteen thousand dollars through that grant application. Timeline on that is supposed to be reviewed by the, by the end of, real, real quick, review on that. So that'll be the one, good news, the, the police department pickup, the transmissions out of that. And Denny talked with you about that, John?
How old is that pickup?
Fifteen, is that right?
Sixteen. Sixteen?
Sixteen, sixteen, direct goes eighteen? Yeah.
So we only have one?
And what is our revolving purchase thing?
We got one, we don't hear for a couple of months yet, but it's no good the way it is.
There's plenty of them in the A's.
So the.
Pickup's.
I actually talked to Tyson today with vehicles, and he said that we're looking at the end of the year.
And it's because, I guess.
I guess in production, I guess the parts that they're missing come from the Netherlands.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course. So that's what's stopping productions.
I like that little piece for pickups that's in China.
Yeah, so that's, that's the issue.
Yeah.
So this was the one that we were. So this was the one that we were going to trade?
Uh, it would, it would just get pushed down into the next apartment.
To the parking lot.
Well, it'd be administration truck for, for now, that we'd look at administration.
We'd still keep it, it's just.
And then.
So you gotta just fix the transmission, what's that, four thousand?
Four thousand four.
Four thousand.
That is my radiator.
When a pickup costs forty, fifty.
Seventy.
Because these don't cost.
So that's going to be, that's going to be ten days. Well, now we're probably down to eight days. That's going to be eight days out. During the Durango and they can grab my white truck and tell.
So it's over to?
So Danny says it right now.
Oh, Danny's, yeah.
So we'll make do.
All right.
We're going to have to.
A few other things I've received, notice from, from the union about opening bargaining. So I just need to get a response back to them that we've acknowledged that we've received this and we'd look at, at opening bargaining, but I want to get the health insurance renewal before we'd ever look at, at bargaining, so that'd be at least probably first of December. And the liquid partners had put a, put a rezoning request before the planning and zoning commission to rezone some property south of Dixie land from R three to R five, allows for narrower lots. The P and Z had met on that last week and tabled that issue there, meeting again then tomorrow night. So it's tomorrow night, seven o'clock is, is when the P and Z, what we can be.
So I have a question about the. You know, the P and Z, you want it site plans, I don't know how detailed they expect because it seems to me that if the access to the east hasn't definitely been shut down as far as the contractor developer might be concerned, I mean, he's going to have to totally revamp that whole, whole set then if access is south.
South.
Um, so I, I wondered if that's going to be kind of hard for him to do.
They're, they're working on some things pertaining to, to the south. I wouldn't expect a, a professional plan, they didn't spend a lot of money on, on another option.
Right, well, I wouldn't hope so.
How come they can't go, when you look at that, right around the lake and look to the north, here's our line between the two houses.
That's what we're talking about, it's right between Cheryl Solberg's and Man Hustle.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's the accessible.
Yeah.
That is the accessible. It's just that it's.
Not very big.
Not very big. It, it meets our requirements, our requirement was three fifty feet, six fifty feet.
Oh, yeah.
It's just cramped down there in that area and the way those two houses to the north side sit in there. If you, if you rent and had some, some range for some turns to you, that's what they're, what they're looking at. Is some, some ideas on that?
That big tank that lays up school there, where does that go? That big water tank, the water that.
Oh, is that the?
For the fire.
Fire suppression, that deal? To the north, isn't it, it's kind of on the, what would have been the old playground.
Oh. So that'd be very flat or?
Yeah, I'm going to assume.
Just a plastic.
Underground? Because otherwise it's going to freeze.
I just wonder. I don't have every plan, I was just wondering.
Well, Kay is leaving on vacation here in a couple of days.
Long wait for this guy?
Could be long, two weeks for me. Kay is going to be gone from the seventh through the twentieth, so I just, you ought to watch, no, she's going to be gone. And then, you know, we're just kind of tied down as far as what, what can happen outside the office, so. Just know that she'll, she'll be gone. Sack County League is the fourteenth, Thursday the fourteenth in Litten, but they want an RSVP quickly to prepare for a theater, as John was still.
What, what day is that?
Um, I'm going to have to let you know, I'll try to let you know.
Tuesday the fourteenth, yeah.
Twenty?
Thursday.
Thursday.
I'll be back just.
Yeah, well.
I'll let you know.
Cause, so it's at, in Litten, at their new fire station, that's where they're going.
Oh.
Check out their new fire station. And. That's the one, so, so it's there. That Western Iowa Advantage meeting is Wednesday, this Wednesday the sixth, it's, it's in Audubon. And why do you, Mayor Mora and I are going, anybody else interested in going?
I don't think I have last, oh, that last step for now.
No. I talked to Bobby Carroll today, Bob, Bob called, and we're talking about it, about the street. The street's all, all digged out, they're, and ready to go, he just said it got pushed back a couple of more weeks to this time.
Who brings them all these days? So who pays for the street, he does.
Um, hey.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Even adjourned.